Here.
Lori Mallett.
Here.
Karen Robinson.
Here.
Francine Hart.
Here.
Jeffrey Adams.
Here.
Paul Malberti.
Here.
Greg Tallin.
Yeah.
John Cachell.
Here.
And me.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me read the COVID-19 statement, which is always very popular. Francine, can you read it much better than I do? You want to read? No, that's all.
Sure, I read it every two weeks.
No, no, no. I'll read it. Just kidding you.
Okay.
All right, the Plastile Planning Board, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis, in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, is authorized to meet electronically, and these reasons shall be reflected in minutes. Notice of this electronic meeting was sent to all abudders and published in the Eagle Tribune newspaper. The Plastile Planning Board is utilizing the GoToWebinar program of the GoToMeeting platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through the GoToWebinar program, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting. The link to access this meeting was provided on the town's website. Please report any issues to jcashell@plastile.com. There is a raise your hand feature on the program that will allow attendees to participate in a discussion. There is also a Q&amp;A box for the public to type questions during the meeting. The public can also send emails with questions or concerns prior to or during the meeting to jimpeck206@plastile.com. Please note, all questions and concerns typed into the Q&amp;A box or sent via email will be read aloud, become part of the public record. The meeting will also be live on Plastile Access Cable, Channel 17, and will be live streaming on the town's website. And I now can see up there that we're on cable and live streaming. So, that's that. Let's move on to review and approve the previous minutes, which would be January 20th. Hopefully, everybody has read them, as I always say. Does anybody have any discussion or any changes? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes of January 20th of 2021.
Motion by Francine.
I'll second it.
Second by Karen. Any discussion? They're being done, I call for a, it's going to have to be a roll call vote, because Tim is remote. It's your fault.
Peck.
Okay, Charlene, go ahead.
Ready, Jim Peck.
Yes.
Tim Moore.
Yes.
Lori Mallett.
Yes.
Karen Robinson.
Yes.
Francine Hart.
Yes.
Jeffrey Adams. Oh, you don't, sorry. That's where we go, right?
Yep.
Okay, motion passes 500. Okay, move on to the next topic, topic number three. And the next topic is one we, I wanted to do upfront before the hearings, where I was looking for alternate members, and we did, I did get an email a couple of weeks ago, on February 2nd. I'll read you the email. Dear Chairman Peck, I am writing to express my desire of becoming, or being, a Planning Board alternate member. I've served on many town boards, track, energy, Old Home Day, and more recently, I was the Chair of the Budget Committee for the past two years. I'd love to learn more about planning, and I wish to continue to serve the town in any way that I can. Please let me know how to start this process. Respectfully, Maxine Dobson. So, I asked Max to come today, and I think she's there, behind the chair, I can see her there. So, Max, why don't you come up and explain, you know, your desire and what you want to do here?
Hi, yeah, I've been involved in the town for the past few years, and Planning Board is an elusive creature that I want to know more about. I think it's important to know what's going on in the town, especially the planning, development, where the town's going in the future, and I'd really like to see how it works.
Sounds good. I mean, I know Max, and I know she's very dedicated to the town, she's served on the Budget Committee, and she's looking for some experience on the Planning Board, and we can always use an alternate. I think we have two alternates now. Of course, Tom is running for unopposed, so we'll probably end up with one alternate, unless something untoward happens there with Tom. So, we can always use two alternates, and I think that's great that you volunteered, and I applaud you for doing that. And that's just my comment. If anybody else has any questions or comments, go ahead, if you do.
I'd just like to add that I think being an alternate is useful, because some people don't have the full time to dedicate to serve on a board, which I learned the past few years for Budget Committee. So, being an alternate means I can take in the information, learn the ropes, but not be committed to have to go to everything every day.
Right.
Thank you very much. So, I want to do this, and signed up.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other comments? Okay, they're being done. I would entertain a motion to approve Max to become an alternate for the Planning Board.
I'll make the motion to approve Maxine Dobson to be an alternate for the Planning Board.
Okay, motion by Lori.
I'll second it.
Second by Karen. Any discussion? No discussion? Okay, I'll call for another roll call vote, Charlene.
Jim Peck.
Yes.
Tim Moore.
Yes.
Lori Mallett.
Yes.
Karen Robinson.
Yes.
Francine Hart.
Abstain.
Okay, so the motion passes 401. So, you are now an alternate, and you can sit back there. You wouldn't sit up here now, but next time, I believe that's how it works, you would actually sit up here.
Well, I just came, I had the time to come tonight, but I will make sure that I'm available for the next.
Yeah, I mean, you don't have to stay tonight, but.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks a lot, appreciate your time.
She'll need to do some stuff with the Town Hall and whatnot.
Pardon?
She'll need to do some things with the Town Hall.
Oh, that's true, yeah. I always forget about that.
What does that?
Yeah, you need to come into the, I believe, to the Town Clerk, is that right?
Yeah, I know the drill.
Okay, you know, you know the drill. She knows better than I do.
Jeff.
What do I know? Yes, Jeff?
When do I have to apply to renew?
That's a good question. I didn't think you were up this time. I think it's, I know in the town report, it says the year that you have to do it, because I don't think you're up this year, are you? I think you have to look at the town report.
I think it's good for three years.
I think you're good for three years, and I don't think your time is up.
It's not this year, okay.
We can look, it's in the town report, it's just a fact question, we'll.
Yeah, that's what I wasn't sure.
Yeah, we'll check it after the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so, move on to public hearings. We have two, the good news is we are not going to go through the warrants again, by the way. Just thought I'd mention that.
Sure, I'm happy.
And by the way, the warrants are all set, and I believe the ballot is just about ready to go out, come out?
Martha and I proofed all of them yesterday, and they went out as soon as we were done, so I don't know when they're going to be published, but they should be done shortly. They have to be done shortly.
Yeah, so they're being printed then?
Yep.
Okay.
Is that the report too?
Yeah.
Is the report coming out too?
Oh, they, when the town.
The town report is going to be dedicated March 1st, and then it'll be available at the Town Hall, and I believe online on March 2nd.
March 2nd.
That sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, so, let's move on to the two public hearings. We have two public hearings tonight. I know there's some people in the audience, and I think there may be one person from the public online as well. So, I'll read the first public hearing and open it. The first public hearing is PB 21-01, our first public hearing this year. The completeness of an application from DNP Realty Trust, David O'Keefe TR, for an amended site plan that proposes the addition of 1,568 square feet, square foot, storage building, associated paved driveway, and related drainage improvements. The property is located at 26 Main Street, tax map 37 lot 11, in the C2 district. The applicant is the property owner of record. If the applicant is found, if the application is found to be complete, the Planning Board may immediately conduct the public hearing. So, I believe we have a, I know we have a lot of material here. We have a report that our staff is recommending that the application is complete. Okay. So, technically, we need to, we need to have a motion to, that the application is complete. If you look at your, at the staff review report, on the second page, there's a motion. All the materials that are supposed to be received are on the first page. I can't see that anything is missing. I don't, if anybody else can, I can't see it, so I'll ask for a motion to accept the application as complete, which is on the second, top of the second page. Lori?
Not that it isn't complete, it's code enforcement quoted on his letter that everybody has in their packet, Table 220-32D. I believe it actually should be 32C, which would be the C2 district.
Right, I agree, I agree with that.
Because I believe D is for the village.
I think it's just a mistake by the zoning officer. He stated that the use was permitted, but he cited 32C instead of 32, I'm sorry, 22? 32.
No, it should be 32C, but he put 32D.
Everything else is the same.
Yeah.
So, we don't really need to change that, just recognize that it does, there's no real impact here, because it is a permitted use in C2, which is what we're talking about. So, that said, is there any discussion about whether the application is complete? Then I'll entertain a motion that it's complete. Anyone?
I move to accept the application for an amended site plan to allow 1,568 square footage of storage building, additional paved driveway, and related drainage for the property located at 26 Main Street, tax map 37 lot 11, is complete.
Hey, motion by Francine. Looking for a second. No seconds?
I'll second.
If no one will second, oh, Tim, did you say?
Tim did second.
All right, Tim. All right, Timmy. Okay, Tim seconded it. Okay, so, any discussion? They're being done, I call for another roll call vote, Charlene.
Jim Peck.
Yes.
Tim Moore.
Yes.
Lori Mallett.
Yes.
Karen Robinson.
Yes.
Francine Hart.
Yes.
All right, the motion passes 500, so the application is complete, so now I will open the hearing, and I've already read it, probably prematurely, but everybody heard what I said. And even better, Charlie's here to explain it.
Thank you very much, and it's good to see everybody again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff. This is, I'm Charlie Zilch from SCC and Associates, just to identify myself. And with me tonight is Bill Hall from Civil Design Consultants in the green shirt back there. And we're here on behalf of Dave O'Keefe of DNP Realty Trust. He is also with us, in the very back of the room as well, for his amended site plan at 26 Main Street. So, this has been, this site's been before you, in the sister site right next door, before the board several times over the last couple of years, for just minor amendments to their, to their existing businesses. Everybody knows it is the pool place. This is the one right next to the pool building. So, just to kind of run through what we're looking at here, this is an acre and a half lot. It has 130 feet of frontage on Main Street. The property is located entirely in the commercial 2 zone. The property currently supports an existing commercial building that's in the rear of the lot, and that commercial building houses their office space, as well as, it's a repair business for business services, swimming pool cleaners. I think we've got a site plan, amended site plan approved on that back in 2017, so he's been operating with that since that time. And also on the lot, they have a separate detached storage building, which is up near the front of the lot. So, as I said, this business is in support of their budding swimming pool business, sales and service, which is on Lot 3712. Access to both businesses is through a common driveway, shared by both. They have shared parking, and the parking for the existing commercial business on our subject lot is to the side of the building, and also in the rear of it, as you can see the very back of the property. The lot is served by its own individual septic system. You can see the septic system in between the office building and the storage building, and they have a shared well, which you can see over on the abutting lot 12. So, there's also wetlands on the site, over on the far south side of the property. There's a fairly large wetland complex. There's also a utility easement that runs from Main Street back to the Chandler Place condominiums at the rear of the site. So, you can see that kind of cuts right through the property. So, as you stated, the intent of the application is pretty straightforward, they're looking to seek approval to allow for construction of a 28 by 56, 1,568 square foot storage building, addition to the existing storage building. This addition will serve in the same manner as the existing building to house equipment and product for both the businesses. So, you can see how we've had that set up there. If you're looking at Sheet 2, is probably the easiest one to look at, you can see the building basically tees in the back of the existing storage building. It's nestled in there in between the setbacks, meets all the wetland setbacks, meets the sideline setbacks, doesn't encroach on any of the landscaping buffers or anything like that, sets in really nicely. There's a couple of structures that'll be taken out of, there was an old pool and some fencing, that'll come out, and then the storage building will fit right in there. As you can see, we are adding a little bit of pavement on the, what would be the west side of the building. There's a section of pavement right in there, would come right off of the, that existing parking lot by the office building, and that'll access the big bay door on the side of the building. There's only a single door on the driveway side of the building, and it's basically just storage. So, the building is basically metal on slab. It'll be set down from the existing garage about 16 or 17 inches, just the one large bay door. It's non-habitable, pretty straightforward. There's detail of the building you can see on the next sheet. We gave you a couple different elevations, so it's pretty much in keeping with already there, just in addition to that existing building. So, one of the other things with this site, we're going to be adding, including the pavement in the building, about 2,600 square feet of impervious area to the site, bringing the total site coverage from 20% to 25% coverage. So, in an effort to manage the stormwater runoff, because we're obviously going to be increasing it, we're proposing to adding a drainage structure at the end of a culvert that currently releases all the parking lot drainage directly into the wetlands. This structure consists of an infiltration basin and outlet control structure. A drainage memo has been prepared in support of the design. So, basically, this site plan, the initial site plan that was done for this years and years ago, didn't really have any drainage devices on it. We've been slowly adding to the site. We're getting pretty close to our coverage requirements, and so it was time that we added something here to capture some of that stormwater runoff. So, this will take care of not only the parking area on our site, but also grab all the stormwater runoff on the adjacent site. It'll bring it down an existing series of basins. You can see the first basin over here on Lot 12, connects to this basin here, and there's an existing storm drain just outside of our structure, our addition. And so, we'll basically capture the end of that into this infiltration basin, treat it, infiltrate it, and then we have an emergency spill over here. So, pretty straightforward, no additional changes to either the sites or uses, other than what I just run through. As I said, the addition meets all the current setbacks, there's no variances required for the location of the building or for any of the improvements here. No additional state permits, we have a recently upgraded DOT permit. We have a state-approved septic design, so we're all set with that. Received both the staff and Steve Keach comments, we addressed all those comments, and we're able to get them back for, basically sign off from both the staff and from Steve Keach. So, any questions about the proposal?
Okay, I'll kick it off. I have a few questions.
Sure.
Maybe you could give us like an overview, there's two lots side by side. One is 26, which we're talking about, next to it is 26B. I guess I'm trying to understand the relationship between the two lots. If I'm not mistaken, one is owned by DNP Realty Trust, and the other is owned by DAP Realty Trust.
Yes.
Two different entities.
Yep.
But if I'm not mistaken, it's both David and Patrick's business.
Well, I think our site here is just owned by Dave, it's, you're the sole proprietor of it, and then.
Right.
The adjacent site is Dave and his brother Patrick.
Okay.
Yep.
So, I guess my question is, what is the relationship between the two? One business is purported to be, 26 is robotic pool cleaners.
Yep.
That's David's.
Yep.
And then the other one is basically a pool business, where they sell pool supplies, and they have a retail business there.
Yes.
So, are they all part of the same business, or is it two separate businesses? I'm a little confused on that.
Well, it is, it is two separate businesses, with each has its own different function. They also have a property on Garden Road as well. And Garden Road, if I'm not mistaken, serves some of their larger pool contractors, they do a lot of the service out of that. This one, Lot 12, or the site owned by both the gentlemen here, that's more of a retail service, and then, and I'm just simplifying, and then Dave's site, or our subject site, is more of a repair business. So, they all support each other.
Are they really the same business, Easy Test Pools? Is that, is it all under the same accounting business, Easy Test Pools, or are they two separate financial entities?
That, they're separate?
Yeah.
They're all separate?
They're two separate?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. They support each other, but they are distinctly separate businesses.
Okay, so, currently existing on this 26, you have two buildings. You have the one in the front, which says on it that it's an existing garage storage.
Yes.
Even though it looks to me like it was at least formerly a house or residence, or no?
Yes, it was.
It was converted into storage?
Yeah, we converted that in 2017.
And the storage, is that simply for the robotic pool cleaners, or is it also for the pool business on the other side?
It's used by both.
By both?
Yep. So, what they're looking for, for this additional storage, is, one of the big problems that they have with COVID is they ran out of supplies, and they couldn't get supplies. And a lot of the supplies are hardware items for the pool businesses, such as pumps, ladders, liners, things like that, that they couldn't get a hold of, and they couldn't service their customers. So, rather than have this situation again, they want storage, so they can keep this material onsite and be better equipped next time there's some sort of an issue such as COVID-19. So, you know, also, their business has expanded over the years as well, so in keeping with that, it also has placed additional demand for storage.
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to get a understanding of the current buildings and what they're used for. So, that first one is simply storage. How big is that one on the front currently? There's no square footage on it, there's about 1,000 maybe?
Yeah, I would say it's probably just under 1,000, or about 1,000.
And the building in the back, is that simply office, an office building?
That's the office, and they also have a little bit of retail sales, online resales, retail sales, and it's their service shop.
Okay, so, the square footage in the back is close to what, 3,000 square feet?
Yeah, 25,000 or so.
I was just trying to understand the background of this, because this is a C2 district.
Yes.
And I'm just kind of catch up on this. C2 typically, it's 2,000 square feet for a retail in a C2 district.
Yep.
So, we have a situation where this is 3,000 plus 4,000 in the front. How did it get to that point?
Well, it's, you're saying strictly retail?
Yeah.
Because this is a mix of.
It says in the C2, I'll read to you what it says, retail business permitted use, retail business maximum 2,000 square feet per lot. And I was just trying to catch up, and that's not what we're addressing tonight, I'm just trying to understand, you know, how it got to be 3,000 and 1,000, which is really 4,000 square feet.
But I think that's if you add up everything in total. Keep in mind, some of the building is storage, the building in front is just storage, it's not retail sales out of that building at all.
Right.
So, that shouldn't factor in. And then, a good part of the back building, or the commercial building, is professional office space.
Well, I wasn't even looking at 26B, I was just looking at the building that's 3,000 square feet in the back, which is an office.
Yep.
And you said retail sales online. So, is that classified as retail, or just part retail, or just?
Just portions of it would be retail. I don't, I honestly don't have an exact number for you.
That's okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to, my observation is, here we have a C2 district, and we have 4,000 square feet on 26B, and if you go to, I'm sorry, 26, and if you go to 26B, you've got, I think, 1,300 in the front, and then in the back, there's 2,700. So, you also have 4,000 square feet on 26B. It just seems to me that it's, now you've got 8,000 square feet in a C2 district in two separate lots, okay. You see where I'm going with this? And you turn to us.
Yeah, well, I think what I'd have to do, find out for you, is how much of that is dedicated to retail, to stay in compliance? My feeling is, it probably doesn't exceed that 2,000 square feet per lot.
Well, you're probably right, because it seems like the front on 26B is all retail, that's 1,300.
Yes, yep.
And in the back, it says it's office space.
It's pretty much all office space.
I understand, there's just one business in there, a television business or whatever, and that doesn't take up a lot of space, so if you added that space to the 1,300, it might be 2,000.
Right.
What is the rest of that office space building in 26 used for? Is it used for storage, or?
Can you answer that question for me?
The big building behind, on 26B, behind the pool place, there's a big building where the television guy is?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
What is the rest of that down, the bottom floor and the upstairs used for?
That's mostly office.
Office, but not, not, not storage?
And there's some storage, and so we got the TV guy, you know, precision TV.
Oh, he's got his storage.
We got our office space, and then we have some storage in there too. We have like a lot of office space. So, we run, we have two other stores, one in Debbie and one in, one in Reddick. So, the office, all the accounting, all the checks, everything is paid through there, we got a couple of secretaries, you know, I mean, so that's where we run, you know, I mean, all the paperwork comes to us, and that's how we run that through. Mostly it's office, and some of it's storage too.
Yeah.
But no chemicals, and that, they're just parts and.
What about behind that building, on 26B? There's some containers behind that building?
Right now, yeah.
Okay. I don't see them on the plan here. Is there, there's containers behind that big building on 26B, right? That's what you just said?
There's, well, I know there's one container behind our subject site, and that's a non-compliance, because it's within the building setbacks, so we're proposing that to be moved to the side of the building, where it'll be outside of the building setback.
You're talking about 26, I'm talking about on 26B, the big building there. Behind that building, there's a couple of containers, I believe. That was my question.
I don't, I don't show them on the, my, the plan is the, is for the subject site. I didn't go out and recently survey the abutting lot.
I know, but it looked like you had everything else on there, but there's no containers there. All right, well, those are my questions, anybody else?
So, what is proposed in the storage in the new building? So, it's not related to the pool business, it's related to the cleaner repair business. So, you mentioned that there were supplies and parts, is it for simply fixing pumps? Well, it is for the pool business as well. Okay. Yeah, they'll share the use of it. All right.
And on the first page, it says there's going to be a patio. So is there going to be a showroom in this new building? Are they going to be displaying merchandise? And it says there's going to be, this is very small, or I need better glasses. Patio stairs.
What number is it?
What number is it, Laurie?
On the, on the plan itself, on the-
The cover?
Yeah.
Cover of it? Oh.
The number.
Oh, the number is 23, I believe.
Yeah, that's right.
It also says it's going to, is that bulkhead?
It says bulkhead.
So is this going to have a foundation?
Does bulkhead-
Oh, this is going to be on slab. The, we're showing the lot coverage that's note 23?
That's existing.
That's all existing, yes.
Oh, that's existing?
So, no, we're just, we-
Okay.
Oh, because it's, it's over by where it says proposed.
No, but proposed includes an existing patio, is that what you're saying, Charlie?
Yeah. So if, it may not be in this case, I mean, it's kind of a standard note. With any sort of proposed coverage, it would include buildings, pavement, existing buildings. It would include overhangs, bulkheads, patio stairs, all that would be included in it. It may not be specific to this particular example, but we would include all that as impervious.
Okay.
We kind of define it and then say that if it's there, we're counting it as part of our coverage.
So what you're saying is there's no patio in this new building?
No.
And there's no-
It's just strictly just a storage building.
There's no showroom?
Nope.
Okay.
So, so I did want to kind of jump back. So with, with that proposed space being used by both businesses, and we know the pool business has lots of chemicals. So are we, are we looking at chemicals in this building and has that been addressed?
Most of the chemicals they store up at the Garden Road site. I would imagine they may have chemicals in and out of here from time to time. But they're all in safety-proofed containers. You know, the-
I think we went through this last time.
Yeah, there's not many chemicals, there's no chemicals in the new building at all. There's no chemicals on that side at all. We don't store chemicals there at all.
Where do you store your chemicals?
Mostly when we get like every week by truck and then we, on nine-god-er road, we store the rest of them.
Yep.
And then, you know what I mean, so we don't store them. And on the other side, DNP, no chemicals. It's all boxes and a lot of cleaners. We have about 2,000 cleaners we have to bring in. We sell like 2,000 to 3,000 cleaners a year. Basically a lot of blocks, big stuff. Like, you know, you clean it up pretty, you know, I mean, three by three square, you know what I mean? You get 10, 15 pallets of that in there at one time too. Most of those go out on UPS. People only buy it when we sell it out on UPS. There's maybe a lot of cleaners in there, a lot of parts.
You can, you can actually sit up here if you want. I think we can hear you through the mic, but just to be sure, if you, if you don't mind sitting, Charlie can move over a little bit. Yeah, just so we make sure you get picked up on the mic.
Yeah.
No, no big deal. I think we just heard what you said, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I just want to, I mean, my hangup is this, and frankly, I just got to throw it out. This is a C2 district. And if, let me just read the objectives and characteristics of the C2 district. And it's not a long district. It's, it's Main Street, basically, not, not even all of Main Street. And it's within the Village Center. But the objective and characteristics of the C2 is this area encompasses that portion referred to as the town center of the older Plastow. It has all the characteristics of a rural New England town through much of its area, which is to be preserved. To that extent, exterior changes on property should be held to a minimum, yet allow for uses compatible with the existing residential character of the area. And, you know, as time goes on here, obviously, you know, past businesses, you have a business there and you want to expand your business. It's just, my concern is that I don't want the C2 district turned into a C1 district. I just throw it out there. I don't think it is, but it, it seems like you have two side-by-side businesses and they're, you know, now going to be approaching 10,000 square feet total buildings. It just seems like that goes against what the C2 is. And I'm not saying that's a grounds for us to deny it. I'm just saying that we just have to take a clear look at that and make sure we understand what's happening here. If you go up and down the C2 district, I don't think, think there's any other businesses that are as big as your business. Just, I, I can't think of any. There's the tent business, for example, which is a big building, which is further up off of Chadwick Avenue. But I, I, I can't really think of any other businesses. They're mostly lawyers or doctors or something like that. It's not what your business is. In, in the best case, it seems to me you would be actually in a C1 district. But you're not and you're expanding and we're not trying to stifle that or anything like, I'm just raising the issue. I don't know whether any of my fellow members hear that concern at all. Maybe not.
Well, I would like to respond. The maximum lot coverage here is 30%. And he's pretty much approached that at 25%. And so I don't see any of the future expansion on the site. You've got the remaining open space, green space, it's going to be encumbered with drainage device. Now you can have the infiltration farm. And then you have a leach field, you always need a leach field there as well.
Yeah.
I think, you know, this is about as far as you can go with this site. It's just the additional storage building. It's, every time, it's been very neat. The earlier they keep an eyesight, do a good job with it. The building will be keeping with the target area, it'll look somewhat residential as well. And it's fairly well operated as well, so.
Yeah.
But I understand your concern.
What about on 26B, over there, would there be any intentions of using? There seems to be some space over there that comes off of Chandler. You could even potentially put a driveway there, couldn't you?
Yeah, unless there's weapons over there, I don't know. We need a full survey on that part.
There's a well there, that's all we got there too, we got the well.
Yeah. Laurie?
Is the business changing? Because when I've driven by, I've seen like pellets being sold for like wood stoves. And I see, when you go in the driveway, I see all these pellets with pellets on it. So are you changing to also sell wood stoves or?
No, just pellets we sell. No wood stoves, no, nothing like that. We just provide pellets, that's it.
And I know once before, since I've been on the board, we gave all types of waivers to 26. I think that had to do with landscaping, maybe, lighting, stormwater. So now these waivers that we've given, they're going to stay with it, right? So we can't- So we can't ask for any kind of change on that tonight, can we? Like as far as landscaping and try to buffer the front more or?
Well, we're not going to back into the landscaped areas. So we're not, we're not asking for any waivers on that.
It seems like there's been a lot of trees taken down right by the front driveway, now where the pellets are.
That's on 26B though, isn't it?
That's 26.
26?
No, where the pellets are, it was always just grass there. I mean, and they took down a couple bushes, the electric company, recently, because they had to put new poles up. So there was a couple, you know, big tall bushes, like eight feet, and they took them down because of the poles. So, and that I didn't want them to take down, but they still do because it was like kind of a nice buffer, like what you're trying to say.
Right.
But they had to take them down.
Okay.
And the poles, they got to put some new ones back in the spring. But, oh, I might myself have to put them back, you know, I mean, whatever it takes, they put them back. But they definitely took out like two or three big, like they were eight feet tall and they're gone.
Yeah.
Because of the two poles they had to put there.
Okay.
Yeah.
So on the plan that shows on 26 along Main Street, it shows, are those bushes or what are those hedges? How tall are those?
Yeah, 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 the bushes. The one in front of the, what, DNP?
The ones right along there.
Yeah, they'll go four feet, yeah.
Those, those pretty much shield the, the building?
Yeah, yeah.
Now, along the lines with what Jim was saying, with the C2 district, is this new storage facility going to support any of the other businesses? I, I guess I'm thinking about this being a really tough spot on Main Street, very busy with North Ave there. So do we have more vehicle trips? Do we have more, you know, anything that would constitute a higher traffic volume and, and more challenges in that area? Or is this simply to carry more inventory?
Yeah. All those cleaners have to be sold online. We can't sell them. People can't come to our place and buy them. These are all cleaners made for online business. So they come to us and, and the company doesn't want us to sell them to people. So people can't come into the store or come to our property and buy them. We have to sell them online in order to keep the contract with these companies going. They have different pool cleaners for online and different pool cleaners for the, for Easy Test Pools. The ones we sell online are the ones that be in that garage there. And they have to go out UPS, FedEx, or any type of, we can't have no one coming to the site and buying because the day is terminated right away. That's what it is. So most of these, well, it's not really going to have customers coming into this, to the garage or nowhere. So they'll go out-
The customer wants to buy something, he has to buy it online?
On that side, yeah, of the pool cleaner business.
He couldn't, he couldn't contact you and say, can I come down and look at it? You wouldn't be able to do that?
No, we can't do that. If we ever get caught, they terminate you right away. That's one thing about these places here. That's why we have no customers coming down on DNP's side. Even if all the parts we sell, they can't even come and pick them up. We have to put in the mail.
He couldn't come to the other side and do that, could he?
Yeah, but we don't do it like that because if we get caught.
Yeah.
This is a whole different company, they set up like that. You sell this online, that's good. You sell this in retail, that's good. If you get caught selling online product in retail.
Get caught by who?
By the people who make the products.
Oh.
You know what I mean? Because they make them all under different names.
Yeah.
So, and they watch it too. They, they have people that watch the, and the internet to see where they're selling because sometimes they call us up, they check you, like it's amazing what they check.
Right.
They have two or three people in these companies just watching what people are selling and where they're going and they track stuff.
So you really don't get any, the customers just come to pick up their merchandise there?
No, they don't come there.
You, you ship it to them?
We ship everything to them.
Oh, okay.
Either by mail, by UPS, by FedEx.
Yeah.
So there's no, we can't sell nothing like on that, online to the store. We don't bring nothing to the store.
So you're taking orders online, you're stocking it up and you're sending it out?
Right, and sending it out.
That's different than the other side where you actually have-
Right, the other side, people can come in. We sell pool cleaners, but they're different brand pool cleaners.
Right.
So, and they, different warranties come with those. That's what it is. The warranty is online and the warranty is on the pool store. And the pool store has greater warranties. The ones you buy online, they're very, can't be warranties.
Another quick question, in that side, there's some portable containers in the back you mentioned. It says they'll be relocated. What are the, what is in those portable containers behind the office?
Filters, yeah. Filters, you know what I mean, and pumps. What it is with the COVID virus.
Yeah.
You have to buy everything upfront now. We have to buy like, so like before, you didn't have to, before this started. Now you got to buy everything upfront because everything's going out so fast.
Yeah.
We have to buy like our filters for the whole season in the beginning. So there's no chemicals in there, no nothing, just plain-
Just filters.
Filters and pumps.
So you, you're going to relocate, there's one container, I guess it gets relocated behind. So it's not within the buffer, I guess that's the reason? You see that, Charlie?
No, it's, it's one container in that, we're showing the location of where it is now.
No, I understand that, but why, why are you relocating it?
Because it's within the-
Within the buffer. Right. Should have, should have been, right. I got you. Okay. I'm out of questions. Anybody else? Nothing?
Is there anybody in the public?
Uh, yeah, I need to ask if anybody is here, present at Town Hall who would like to ask a question from the public. I'm opening it up to the, to the public. No one here, okay. Is there anybody online? I hate to even ask because he's not down here. Charlie, can you tell? I hate to ask. No, ask John. John's going to do it.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think there's anybody. There's one guy, it's for the next hearing, I think, Tardif.
My question was on that driveway. How many more people would be coming in? That's a horrible driveway.
I had to stop the other day because it was a tractor, there's a tractor trail backing in there.
Calls on my phone.
Yeah, I mean, a UPS is coming once, are they picking up five filters? Or are they coming five times to pick up one, you know what I mean?
That, that was my question, was traffic.
I was stopped on Main Street because of the tractor trail backing in there.
That, that's-
It is a bad place.
Okay, we're waiting for Mr. Castle to find anybody online, which he probably won't, but we're-
Rick Nelson?
Nelson?
Peter Taylor?
Is there any way you can turn on? Mr. Nelson, if you're watching and listening, are you here for this hearing or the next hearing? Or are you just listening in? He didn't answer? Is he unmuted, you know?
Yeah, everybody's unmuted.
Okay. So Mr. Nelson, you didn't speak up, so I'm assuming you're not here for this hearing?
Peter Taylor might be.
Taylor?
Yep, Peter Taylor. Used to be on school board.
He what?
Yeah, he used to be.
Tardif is for the other one. I know he's for Sweet Hill.
Oh, I don't know.
No, he's over.
What's the name? Kelly?
Cardlina.
Okay. Did I hear someone?
Yeah.
Say again?
I think it was just some background noise.
Yeah, just background. Okay, so I'll make a management decision here and say there's no one out there. One last time, speak up. I don't want to cut anybody off if they want to make a comment. Going once. Right. Oh, okay, that's it then. Yeah, they're for the next one. And of course, Tim, Tim is here. Tim, you don't have any questions? You're pretty quiet.
I think not, no.
Okay, that's all right. Okay, there being no questions, we can move to, we don't have any waivers. I guess I'll close the public hearing, unless you have some more comments, Charlie?
No, I think I'm all dead.
Okay. So I'll close the public hearing. And we move down to the, the bottom of the second page here and where there's a draft motion to approve the site plan, if anybody wants to make that motion or another motion, any other motion. I'll open it up if you want to look at that motion at the bottom. I think there is a condition there. I, I don't know, Charlie. It says that for the recommendation of Keach, confirmation of the relocation of the portable storage container and a copy of its permit are received by the planning department. That's still a condition?
That's fine, yeah.
Okay. Okay, with that one condition, there's a motion there. Does anybody want to make a motion? John, you got a comment?
I just want to point out on the page three, there's a couple of passages that need to be brought out after the vote or during the vote.
Oh, okay.
Pre-construction bonding and impact fees.
That's after the vote, I guess?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make sure we do, do that, thanks. Good, good point.
I move to amend, is that the one you approve?
Pardon?
I move to approve. Is that the one you wanted us to read?
Yep.
Okay, I'll read it.
You can read the whole thing.
Okay. I move to approve the amended site plan to allow a 1,005, 68.
1,0568, square foot.
Okay, storage building, additional paved driveway, related drainage for the property located at 26 Main Street, tax map 37, Lot 11, with the following conditions. Further recommendation of Keach Nordstrom Associates, confirmation of the relocation of the portable storage container and a copy of its permit are received by the planning department.
Thank you, Karen. Do I have a second?
Call second.
Second by Francine. Any discussion? No discussion, then I'll call for a roll call vote. Charlie?
Jim Puck?
Yes.
Tim Moore?
Yes.
Laurie Millet?
No.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.[1626.38]
Francine Hart?
Yes.
Okay, if I got it right, four zero, four one zero. Okay. You wanna say why you voted, or not?
I just don't think it fits into the C2 district at all, and I have a difference of opinion about the 2,000 square feet of retail. I think there's more retail going on there than, you know.
I got a little bit of a concern of that, Charlie, and, and Dave, that, you know, we would like to really understand a little bit more, even though we passed it at, you know, what the retail part of the business is, uh. So that, that can, you can come back with that, it's nothing new.
I mean, this is, I, since I've been on the board, this is the fifth time we've amended, uh, I don't know, like, three for 26B and two for 26, and we gave a lot of waivers already for 26 that can't do anything about tonight, but. Well, that's good, that's good, that's a plus, that's a plus.
It sounded like you want on the record to say there's really not a lot more you can do on 26, 26.
I hope not, it shouldn't be anymore.
Well, I've only got a year left, so, you know.
I mean, you're always welcome to come back, but. But thank you for coming in, I appreciate it, Dave and, and Charlie.
Uh, Mr. Chair, do we need to include these, um, conditions in the record as well?
Even though John pointed it out, I totally forgot it. Just so you know, Charlie, I think you know this, uh, pre-construction meeting prior to work commencing, the applicant will schedule a pre-construction, you know that.
Yep. I'll remind them of that.
Bonding, the applicant shall post a bond of 5,000 prior to the commencement of any work, you know that too.
Yep.
Impact fees based upon additional square footage of 1,0568 assessed at 42 cents per square foot, the public safety impact fee is assessed at $658.56, and is due prior to the closing of the building permit and/or issue of a certificate of occupancy for the building.
Okay, I did, I had shared that with him already.
You are, you know that stuff, but we should read that, like you said.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Shuffle our papers around here. Okay, so we're gonna move to the next, um, hearing. Again, we need to look at the completeness of the, um, of it, but, uh, I'll read it now, and then we'll talk about the completeness, uh, which I think there's an issue there. It's PB 21-02, the completeness of an application from Total Construction Solutions LLC, care of Kyle McManus, for a subdivision that proposes a seven-unit, three-bedroom each, detached residential condo development, PRD, with a public right-of-way. The subject parcel is 18.41 acres with 237.97 feet of frontage on Sweet Hill Road. The property is located at 44 Sweet Hill Road, tax map 62, lot 29, in the MDR and LDR zoning districts. The owner of record is 44 Sweet Hill LLC. If the application is found to be complete, the planning board may immediately conduct the public hearing. So, let's look at completeness, and we do have a report here. And I, I have a question on the completeness. I don't know if you wanna ask it, Lori, I know Lori had the question.
I, I had a question that, um, we haven't received the condo documents yet for Attorney Clary to go over.
It's on page three of our report, it says legal review condominium documents, the applicant has not yet provided copies of the condo, condominium documents for review by the planning board, legal counsel.
No, that's, we do not have the condominium documents completed at this point, they are under, uh, they're being prepared, but we haven't, hadn't completed yet.
I think what the, the law says is that we need to review those. So, I guess I've got a little agenda about completeness, yeah, for that. That's the only item, I don't know, if you got any comments, John?
Yeah, the only comment would be that, as this project moves along towards the conclusion of the board's review, and all of the issues are pretty much ironed out, that's when they would come in typically with a draft of their condo docs for the board's review. And if you see anything glaring that needs to be tweaked, you would point that out, and then they'd draft a final draft that we would forward to, um, the board counsel, uh, for his review. And then, at the time he's satisfied, he would send his recommendation back. But for them to actually submit those at the time, when, they really don't know if this project's, you know, going to be successfully approved. You know, after tonight's meeting, they'll have a pretty good idea. I'd say we'd be able to, tonight, go over as a public hearing and flesh out any remaining outstanding issues. We did a pretty good job in the fall of pointing this developer in the direction of coming in with this particular, uh, development, which was to shrink the lots, shrink the environmental impact of the prop, of the project. And, um, going on that guidance, this is what they've come into the board with, as their proposal from that particular meeting.
Everything else is in, so this is just one thing that it would be a shame to not call it complete. As long as you understand, obviously, you have to come back with it, so I, I, I'm okay with, you know, going, going forward as complete, that's my, I don't know if anybody else has a, any concerns?
And Jim, can I just conclude? You know, it's significantly complete enough as an application for the board to consider. The application is complete, sufficient enough to hold the public hearing, if the board wants to do that tonight and make that decision.
Right, in order to hold, yeah. Okay, so I will entertain that motion on the bottom of the first page.
All right, I move that the application for a seven-lot detached condominium plan residential development, PRD, at 44 Sweet Hill Road, tax map 62, lot 29, be accepted as complete.
I could, Francine?
Should we condition the, uh?
Yeah, you have to condition the.
The, um, legal, the
Legal.
The document that's required?
I, I think he, I mean, I trust Charlie's gonna, they're gonna do it, so. I, I, we could, Tom, I'm not saying.
I was just asking you.
This is my.
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't need to condition it, because we're not approving anything.
Yeah, right.
They, they're not going anywhere until.
But I'm also gonna need that, I'm also gonna need those legal documents for the state subdivision approval as well.
Right.
So, the project won't move forward, you can't, can't bring it to conclusion without those documents.
Right.
Right, we're, we're just approving the application process, correct?
Exactly.
All right.
Okay, so do I have a second, anyone?
I'll figure it.
Okay, Karen seconds it. Any discussion? Anything on my call for a roll call?
Jim Peck?
Yes.
Tim Moore?
Yes.
Laura Millet?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Francine Hart?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes 500, the, the application is complete. So I'll open the hearing, and, uh, back to you, Charlie.
Okay, uh, again, Charlie Zilch from SDC and Associates for the record, uh, Bill Hall from Civil Design, uh, working with me on the project. And in the back of the room is Kyle McManus, uh, you guys met him before. He's the owner under 44 Sweet Hill Road LLC, and he's also the applicant under Total Construction Solutions LLC for this application for the PRD, uh, at 44 Sweet Hill Road. So you may recall, we were here, as John mentioned, in October for a concept review of the project, so, again, just let me take you a minute to kinda run through, uh, what the project is, the existing conditions. So maybe direct your attentions to sheets two and three. Okay, this way.
Where are you directing?
C2 and C3.
Okay.
As you mentioned, it's an eighteen and a half acre parcel of land, uh, with 238 feet of frontage. It's on the north side of, uh, Sweet Hill Road. Right now, there's currently an existing, uh, abandoned residential dwelling right up against the road, uh, that'll be raised as part of this project. Everybody know where this house is. Come down, uh, once we get going here. So, the site itself, it's mostly wooded, with smaller area around the house. Uh, the road, the, uh, topography drops rather steeply away from the roadway, uh, into a point about 700 feet into the property where it levels off. There are wetlands located on the site as delineated and identified by our wetland scientist, Tim Fawerda. More of that is shown in the back of the property, if you go to sheet C3, you can see that. The wetlands, uh, the wetland complexes, there's several on there, they're kind of a mix of poorly drained, and, and some include pockets of very poorly drained within them. Pretty easily identifiable. There's, as you mentioned, a couple overlying districts on here. This is both within the MDR zone, as well as the LDR. If you go back to sheet C2, you can see that zone line. Majority of the property is LDR, with just the front section being within the MDR zone. So, uh, other overlying districts, the site's not in a floodplain, uh, you're not in shoreline protection, and the northerly third of the site is within aquifer. If you go back to sheet C3, I don't mean to jump you around so much, but you can see there's an aquifer line in the, uh, net northerly end of the site, so about a third of the site's within aquifer. Looking at, uh, the cover sheet, if you jump back to that, you can see that we're surrounded, uh, by residential developments on all sides. You have Sequoia Lane on the west, and then Partridge Lane over on the east side of it. And there's some abutting common space around our property from the Sequoia Lane side as well. So that's basically the existing conditions, and if I could direct your attention to, I think it is sheet C4. That shows the proposal, and basically what it is, is as you mentioned, it's a, uh, proposal to establish, uh, planned residential development, uh, to be known as Horizon Way, the project's name is Horizon Way. Development will consist of, as you can see, seven, three-bedrooms, uh, single-family detached condominium units clustered together within the first 500 feet of the property. Uh, this is gonna be a zero lot-line layout, in which limited common areas are assigned to each unit, and all the other land is considered open space or common land. All required, uh, buffers and open space areas have been provided. Uh, the total area, uh, area of the open space is about 12 acres, which exceeds the amount required, it's a 20-acre site, normally it's 50%, so you've got 12 acres of open space as opposed to the required 10, so you've got a little bit of a, a bump there. All of the units within the development, uh, will be soon, uh, are gonna be served by the soon-to-be-established, um, municipal water, that's located pretty much, uh, adjacent to the site along Sweet Hill Road, I think there's a, uh, a station just up the street at the top of the hill. So, we'll be tied into that, and then it's gonna be, all the buildings are tied into one pair of, of community septic leach fields, as the, uh, each building kinda drops in elevation from Sweet Hill down, and they collectively pick up the sewage run, and then we, uh, direct that to a couple of leach fields located, uh, north of all of the, uh, the seven units. You can see where that is, just by the open space area, that's one of the last improvements before you get into the open space. So, access to the lots be, uh, provided by, as you noted, a dedicated public way, this will also be known as Horizon Way. Uh, the roadway commences at Sweet Hill Road and terminates at a cul-de-sac at about 425 feet into the property. And then from this roadway, each unit will have its own individual driveway, you can see that layout on, on sheet C4 as well. So, as you may recall from our discussion back in October, and then from subsequent discussions that we had with the fire chief and the road agent, uh, we submitted along with this application several waivers to the roadway pavement requirements. Uh, the intent of the request is to allow us to design, uh, flexibility to reduce the rather large amount of fill and site disturbance that would normally be required if we maintain the typical roadway and pavement widths. That's one of the, the big topics of discussion that we had when we were in here for the concept review. Bill showed you a layout, uh, that met the strictest sense of the, uh, the zoning requirements, and, uh, there's a fair amount of fill associated with that, and, and more site disturbance. So we kinda asked to think outside the box, and that's kinda what we did, we did on this, so I'm gonna kinda turn this over to Bill and just let him kinda run through what we did in, in regards to trying to tighten up this layout and, and reduce that overall fill. I'll give you that.
Yes, any C6 through C7, uh, C8 should work. Yeah, that works fine. So, I'm Bill Hall with Civil Design Consultants, and as Charlie said, um, between the preliminary meeting that we had with you, and, uh, meetings with planning staff, and also with DPW and, uh, the fire department, uh, we took all the advice that we received through those meetings, and that's how we generated this plan here. So, as Charlie mentioned, we are seeking relief to some aspects of, um, the subdivision regulations, and, uh, we'll start with the proposed roadway, because all of these are in regard to the roadway. What we're proposing is a 20-foot wide roadway with Cape Cod berms, and that gives us a full paved width of 22 feet. Uh, and this roadway slopes from the north to the south, going down into the site, and we have a 3% level landing for 75 feet per the regulations, uh, and then it grades down at 9%, and then it transfers to a 5% grade through the cul-de-sac. Uh, the proposed right-of-way that we're showing is a 35-foot wide right-of-way. Uh, the reason why we're going with that width is to be able to pull these spaces closer to the right-of-way and reduce the impacts on the abutting properties, and reduce the amount of fill that we need for this. It allowed us to actually shorten the road some as well. Along with the right-of-way, we're actually proposing a 15-foot wide easement around the entire right-of-way. That'd be something that would be deeded to the town for, um, access and maintenance of utilities and everything like that. Getting down to the cul-de-sac, the radius we're proposing is a 40-foot radius, which we also require a waiver for. Um, and then, there's a 45-foot right-of-way radius around the cul-de-sac, which is another waiver. So, in all, we have four waivers, uh, one to pavement width, one to right-of-way width, one to cul-de-sac radius, the pavement radius, um, and then the other is to the cul-de-sac right-of-way radius. Again, uh, this is all in an effort to minimize the fill and environmental impacts on the site. The drainage system that we're using here is a closed drainage, so it's catch basin, and then it's going out to the drainage basin in the back. Again, this helps to save fill, because we don't have to grade in ditches, and we can keep houses closer to the, uh, lot, uh, pavement. This, uh, infiltration basin on C9 here has been designed to meet, uh, New Hampshire DES standards, and we have a 12-foot wide travel basin, very clean, and we're gonna fire it on in the future. And, um, I guess I'll just close with how this impacted the site compared to the original proposal. Basically, in this proposal, there's approximately 40,000 yards of fill, which is still a substantial number, but the original proposal that we brought in was approximately 65,000 yards of fill. So we're talking about a reduction of 25,000 yards of fill, and then in addition to that, we're also, uh, approximately one acre less of disturbance with this proposal here. So it's, uh, substantial savings in disturbance on the site, and in fill on the site as well. Uh, and that's all I have, and I don't know if you wanna speak anything else, or?
Yeah, if I, just a, a couple of things, so, we took advantage of, of trying to narrow up the roadway, obviously, and what that does, it brings the buildings in much tighter, and when you can do that, you can reduce the amount of disturbance, you can reduce the amount of fill. Uh, prior to putting the design together, we did meet with the fire chief and the road agent to make sure that their needs are gonna be met, as far as fire safety and maintenance, snow plowing and all those sort of things. I wouldn't ask that we really visit the waivers tonight, um, they haven't, I don't believe we've received comment from either department yet, uh, based on the full design plan, so I'd rather wait to see if, make sure they're 100% with it. But based on that meeting, this is what we discussed, and this was agreed to, that this would be adequate to serve all those needs. So I would expect that when we do get comments, they'll be favorable, or, uh, if, at the very minimum, maybe a couple of minor changes or tweaks, things like that. But overall, as Bill said, we reduced, uh, the amount of impact, uh, of disturbance, uh, by bringing the gradings in, the grading in, and we eliminated a substantial amount of fill that's necessary to support the site. So, a couple other things, uh, there's no variances associated with it, uh, it's pretty much meets all the requirements for PRD. Uh, we, Bill mentioned the four waivers, uh, we have four state applications associated with this, we have a DOT driveway permit, uh, for the roadway. We're gonna need alteration in terrain, we're over, we're, how far over 100,000 square feet are we?
We're, uh, 4.3 acres.
4.3 acres, okay, all right. So, alteration in terrain, and then, uh, I mentioned before, DES subdivision, uh, condominium approval, and then, uh, the septic system approval. So we have four state approvals, uh, again, going with, uh, the off-site water. So we have received, uh, a comment from town engineer, Steve Keach, we can take a look at that in a bit, but actually, I think this might be a good jumping point for us, you guys, uh, have any questions? Fire away.
Okay, so, um, if I could just say a couple of things. You did give, um, you did get comments from the building safety, they had no comments, building safety.
Yep.
He had no comments, the highway, um, did have a comment, his, his comment, I think, had to do with snow plowing, in terms of, he didn't wanna have a situation where he hit the utility connections.
Yeah, we're, I think we're gonna revisit some of that layout, I think maybe we can push some of these utility boxes back and give him a little bit of additional clearance.
I talked to him myself, and he sounded like he was okay now.
Yeah.
Was that your understanding?
And then, uh, as Bill mentioned, we do have, uh, an easement all the way around.
Yeah.
I think we called it just a, uh, construction and grading easement, but we might expand that to also include snow storage, so there's no confusion about it whatsoever. And that'll give him ample room to, uh, do the snow plowing around this thing.
We were just trying to avoid the situation where, you know, the snowplow hit those utility and, and caused some damage, you know, it sounds like that that's been worked out. To his satisfaction, he told me, so. So there's that, and then police didn't really have any, uh, comments.
Okay.
You mentioned fire, is gonna get back to you. So I just wanted to mention that, and, um.
Yeah, one thing I think we'll provide to the fire department too, is, uh, Bill was gonna put together a, a turning radius, showing their vehicle, how it would be able to maneuver. I think they asked for a school bus, although they didn't really anticipate a school bus going into it, but we'll do that as well, we'll show that, how that can maneuver, come out the cul-de-sac and, and back out of the, on the Sweet Hill Road.
Okay, so you're waiting for that?
Yep, so we'll, uh, we'll, uh, supply that to the fire chief.
The other, I'll give it to you in a second, but, um, in terms of the grading, I'm just looking back to the October meeting. In the October meeting, we did ask you about, uh, I think Mr. Castle asked about, um, you know, fill. At the time, it was an estimate of 40,000, but you're now saying that was really 65,000? Cause in the minutes, it says 40,000, last time you were here.
On, on the previous proposal? On, on the previous proposal, you'll recall that the plan that we brought in graded out the cul-de-sac and didn't grade out the individual lots.
Right, okay.
So, at one point, I had graded out the lots, and I calculated that number, so now we have an apples-to-apples comparison.
So, you're pretty, pretty confident it's now going to be around 40,000?
Yeah.
Still a lot of fill, but not as much.
Yeah, that's to grade out everything, as you're seeing here. Having the previous one, we graded the cul-de-sac and not the individual lots.
Can I just direct your attention to C7, which is the grade?
It's the roadway profile.
The roadway grade. At the bottom, I believe, is from Sweet Hill down to the end of the cul-de-sac, if I'm not mistaken, right? The bottom, left-hand bottom, that's from Sweet Hill down?
Yes.
Yeah. So, you can see that there's significant amount of fill there between the dotted line, which is the existing grade, and then you're going to fill up to the solid line, right?
Correct.
So, you have going from two feet to 13 or 14 feet to fill in. My question was, you fill that in, how wide do you fill that in? Or do you have on the, like, if you're going down the hill, do you have like, now it's still lower here? You don't fill it in all the way to the edge of the property, right?
So, I think you'll see that a little better on Sheet C8 on the next sheet. So, that really varies where we are on the site. Because for that, we're filling out the width basically to behind the proposed dwellings on the right. And then on the left, we start to taper off more at the front of the dwelling. Then around the cul-de-sac, we have to get behind the dwellings before we can start grading out, back out to natural grade.
So, if I understand you, on the left-hand side where those lines go down, it's fairly, it goes down to the left side of the roadway?
Yes.
So, that, does that mean that the, any water coming down will go down in that gully, if you call it a gully or whatever?
So...
As opposed, the road, it'll run off the roadway, go down the roadway, and then run off the roadway, and go down these gullies on the left and right?
So, we have, we have a Cape Cod berm that we're proposing here, so that's going to contain all the roadway runoff.
Okay.
In the roadway. But you are correct that the shoulders will drain off and swale down around behind the dwellings.
As I was trying to picture it, because you have Partridge Road up here, and Partridge Road was obviously filled in just like that, so you have to do the same thing they did. And now between Partridge Road and your road, you'll have this little indentation between the two roads, right? It's not filled in?
Yeah, yeah.
Which would be some kind of a gully that the water will run down those gullies between the two roads and off to the left of your road. Is that right?
Yeah, and there is, actually, on the front side of our road, a fair amount of that is actually going to be into the infiltration basin that we're proposing.
Yeah, it's over here.
Because it's all just going to go behind the dwellings and then down next to the gravel path and get into the basin there.
And eventually, the water that's running down the hill is going all the way to the back of the property, probably. It's not going to the homeowners on either side, it's just going down those gullies and down into the wetlands, right?
Exactly, that's right.
And that shouldn't exacerbate that, because the wetland's always been there, it's not going to be any different runoff.
Yeah, so as part of the stormwater calculations, we have to calculate the pre-existing runoff that goes to the wetlands.
Right.
And then in the post-development condition, we can't exceed the pre-development runoff. So, that's what we've designed this to do.
And it's, it's okay there?
Yep.
Okay. Sorry, Greg, you had a...
You had asked a very good question. That was one of my concerns was, because of these elevations, you'd have a tremendous amount of water going into the tree line, the post-tree line, and with that, that's the wetlands there. And you kind of answered the question, so I don't, I don't dig. The other question I have is, are the dwellings closer to the roads than they were in the previous drawing?
I believe they are, yes. Because on the previous drawing, we had a wider right-of-way, and we had to maintain the same setback to the road.
They have less impact to the surrounding houses, because you're closer to the other, closer to the road.
Yeah, we're still maintaining the 30-foot setback from the right-of-way.
Yeah.
It's just the right-of-way is narrower now.
Is the post-tree line what's there already, or is that something that you're going to be replacing after the development?
No, that would be, the post-tree line that we're showing would be cut, and then any encroachments that are within the buffer would have to be replaced.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Any other questions from the board? John?
I wanted to get back to this easement issue, because it, there is a 35-foot-wide right-of-way proposed with this. The pavement width is 20 feet. Now, I'd like everybody to try to envision, you know, snow conditions out in front of their own property. They're worried about, you know, needing 20-plus feet off of the pavement surface for snow storage. Now, if I, I live on a 50-foot-wide paved state highway, and if they ever came that far onto my property, I'd be raising you-know-what. But they're able to plow on any given snow as bad as it gets at times, and it does get bad. There's never any more snow storage needed along that 50-foot right-of-way paved surface than the width of the sidewalk. And they never plow snow onto my grass, and my grass is only five feet away from the edge of, the inside edge of curb. So, they're only plowing snow onto the five-foot-wide sidewalk, and that's a 50-foot wide paved surface. So, what I'm getting at is that there are areas within this roadway that we should be concerned about snow storage. And I'm thinking that that easement area, perhaps along what I'll call the westerly side of the road, northeast, the westerly side where there's no house, you know, for, what, 400 feet in. So, there could be snow storage on that side if they needed it. And then at the end, where, where a DPW typically needs to start storing snow within the area of the cul-de-sac, it's usually at the end. And there is sufficient depth in front of those two, not in front of those two houses, but kind of in between those two houses, so that, you know, if you did need a snow storage area and an easement for that, that's really where you would consider it. But, you know, this easement line here, I mean, you're talking seven houses, no further extension of the subdivision into more houses, and to require that easement taking up the whole front of the lot of these, these houses, that's a little bit much.
Well, I agree with you in terms of snow storage. I mean, I don't see anything on here that says where the snow storage would be. Typically, in a site plan, we would have that, not necessarily in this kind of plan, but this kind of unique plan, it seems like we would, we'd need to know where you're going to put the snow. Because I, you know, to piggyback on what John said, I live on a cul-de-sac, and I'm not at the, in the cul-de-sac, but the guys in the cul-de-sac, they don't like it when the guys come in and they pile up the snow in front of their houses. They just don't like it. In fact, just a little side story, one guy complained, so they don't put it in front of his, and now they put it in front of the other guy. So, it becomes one of those, where are you going to put the goddamn snow? So, I just, you know, that's a very good question, and I'm sure you got a good answer, Charlie.
No, we did talk about this with the Road Agent. I mean, that's obviously a concern. You get some pretty heavy winters in New England from time to time. So, one of the areas that we spoke of that is going to be kind of key for Dan, his crew, is, is right at the cul-de-sac, where do they go with the snow? Well, there's a pretty substantial gap between Units Six and Seven on the left-hand side of the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
And so, there's a, there's a pretty voluminous area that they could store snow for just that cul-de-sac. And as John alluded to, there's also no houses along the first several hundred feet on the left-hand side as well. So, a lot of the snow could be stored there as well. And then, like I did say, that there is an easement along the front of the, on, in front of all the units here that allows for storage, and we can call that out on the plan, so it's on here.
Charlie, can I just point out?
Sure.
That between the last house on the left before you get to the cul-de-sac and the last house on the left at the cul-de-sac, that substantial sloped area there, which is really unusable area, and that would be a perfect area for snow storage.
You're talking about over here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, and that's exactly what we talked about with...
And that's typically where you would push the snow off the side of the road and out of the way, not bothering anybody, because as Jim pointed out, I tell you, there's battles that brew against towns at the end of these cul-de-sacs.
Do I steal it, because we're at the end?
Where, hey, I don't want that stuff on my property and looking at it until June.
Right.
You know, where can you put it so you don't have to, you know?
Well, the other, the other thing that's nice about storing it on that side of the cul-de-sac, it's not going to be storing the snow right on top of the drainage structures.
Yeah.
Because I know that can be problematic too with the melting and freezing and blocking, you know, the grates and that sort of thing. So, this would be a nice place to put it. It's out of the way, be allowed to melt off and slowly...
How do you, when you're storing...
And inform DPW of it.
Sorry?
And to inform the DPW, that's where it goes, so there's no disputing about it.
DPW is going to be plowing it, right?
As a, as a resident on a cul-de-sac, which I would be the equivalent to about the fourth house down on the right, as the plows come down, they deposit, deposit a heck of a lot of the snow there, because they start to make the turn. I get the bulk of the snow. So, it's going to be kind of hard to pull that snow all the way around and deposit it in between those two, two homes. But, I mean, I, I think it'll take some skill and some work, but it's an issue. Now, the cul-de-sac I live on has some land in the middle of it, so they actually come back and push a lot of that snow into the middle. This, this won't have that, so...
Yeah, one of the things that we did consider with both the Road Agent and Fire was a T-turn at the end of this thing, and we brought him in a design showing that, and they much preferred the cul-de-sac even with a little bit more technical issue with, with trying to store snow. I think it, it makes for a better layout for both the service all of the town services there.
The, the other issue I'd interject is the Cape Cod berms. Berms are along the side, right? So, I mean, you've got the plows pushing snow over the berms or through the berms, isn't that kind of problematic? Would they be able to skip over the berm with the plow head? I mean, I'm just throwing it out.
Generally, they'll try and just keep the edge and go down, and then you might get some windrow that goes over, but let's go there.
Dan didn't, I mean, you talked to Dan, right? Dan Garland?
Yes.
Did he mention anything about snow removal? Nothing?
About snow removal?
Yeah, did you talk to him about snow removal?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, he was present at that conversation.
Okay. Okay, any other questions from the board?
Jim, can I just point out?
Yeah, John?
You know, when you're talking about the slopes of the road, you know, when you're dealing with real difficult terrain such as this, you know, they're bringing fill in. You know, it's not a matter that they're blasting a mountain out of it and trying to bring all of this grade down so they can actually build a road. I just want to point out that, you know, a 5% grade, and it's a negative grade, it's going downhill, that's really not a bad grade for a cul-de-sac. You really like them flat, but, you know, not more than 5%, that's reasonable. And then the bulk of the roadway has a 9%. For many years, the maximum grade in a lot of municipalities is 10%. So, again, that's reasonable that they're asking for that longest stretch of the road to be 9%. And what's really good is that they, they were almost able to get, a lot of engineers would consider 3%, getting close to a flat grade. It's not zero, but approaching Sweet Hill Road, at least it's a negative grade, it's not a positive grade. You're going to be getting out of Sweet Hill, onto Sweet Hill Road from this roadway, you're not, you're not sliding, you know, with a positive grade out to Sweet Hill Road, you're, you're climbing out of it. So, that's another, you know, a safe grade, it's a reasonable grade for an approach. And typically, any municipality would ask for, you know, a maximum 3% grade positive or 3 negative. Correct, Charlie?
Correct.
Yeah, so that's, that's getting close to flat. Matter of fact, right at Sweet Hill, it looks like it's a 2% grade, correct?
Yep.
Yeah.
You dropped it.
So, I just want to point out the design features of this. It's all within reason.
Right. And I know that Mr. Keach had a number of points, I can't put my finger on Keach's report...
Jim, can I ask a question?
He had a number of things that you haven't answered yet, so you need to answer those, right?
From...
Right, okay.
From whom?
Sorry?
From who?
From whom? The question?
I thought you had some technical questions.
Oh, from Keach.
Mr. Keach.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's probably a couple dozen comments.
So, you need to respond to him.
Yeah, so I don't know if it's really worth the time, effort, and energy to go through those comments. I've reviewed them with...
We're probably going to continue this, probably, so...
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, no, that's the expectation.
I just wanted to bring that up, that he, he had a number of comments, which I thought were pretty good. Some were just, you know, you know, add this, or, you know, isn't typed right or whatever. But some were substantive type comments, and you need to respond. So, just so the board knows, we're probably going to continue. But do we have any other questions?
Yeah. Do you know, do you know if we have any roads in town that have these Cape Cod berms along the side of them? Because I can't imagine the plows not chewing those up. I mean, the way I see them plow, I, I don't know.
One thing with plow and plow roots in any town, the DPW supervisor is responsible for making sure that anybody that's plowing the roadways goes out to see their root before there's snow on it. These Cape Cod berms have a design with a slight grade like this. They're pretty much melded into the roadway surface pavement. And as long as it's properly constructed and the berm is, you know, really melded into that finished course of pavement of the roadway, they hold up pretty well. Now, if a plow hits them, they're going to, they're going to scar them, you know? Will they take out that particular type of design? They won't take it out completely, but they'll scar it. But that's what the job of the DPW, because this is going to be a public roadway, so the job of the DPW supervisor is to make sure that the person plowing it knows where the limitation of the roadway. The last thing you want to do, plowing, is actually hit a solid structure. There's no worse feeling in the world. You know, your trucks just... These trucks don't last a long time when they're used for plowing. That's the problem. A lot of contractors use their trucks just as trucks and what they've been built for. You put a plow on them, it becomes a, you know...
Well, I don't know, I just see the speed of the, you know, how quickly the plow goes by my house. I can't imagine if there was this Cape Cod berm out there, what it would end up looking like. That's just me.
On this note too, a lot of communities require the slope granite curbing as a substitute for the berm. It's not a perfect type of curbing either, because when that gets hit by a plow, creates more damage to the plow, but it also gets displaced, you know, even though they're set in concrete, you know, and they're pretty well placed, but, you know, a plow hits one, it's going to knock it out. In the springtime, you have to replace that missing tooth, so there's, you know, there's a roadway crew out trying to fix it. There's no perfect solution. The only solution is that the plow operator knows the boundaries of the road he's plowing. And, you know, you just learn not to do it. I have vertical granite curbing in front of my property. Those actually help because they're vertical. You know, the plow isn't going to ride up on them. But again, if you, if you're in a plow and you don't know enough to stay away from that curb...
It does, it happens.
You're going through the windshield. Yeah.
It seems to me when the, when you're plowing the road, if you're just plowing down the road, you're not going to hit the berm.
Right.
It's just when you're piling the snow and you're turning around, now you're going across the berm, that's when you're going to have it.
Drainage grates are the same thing, you know? Any drainage grate that's above the, the grade of the road, it's a dangerous situation for the person plowing, you know, and the truck itself, yeah.
I don't know, do you have any comments on that? I mean, there's some concern about the berms when you're plowing, you know, through them. Can you add anything to that?
I don't know, I don't know of anything in town that has Cape Cod berms. I know that Partridge has curbing of some sort, but I'm not sure on what it is exactly, if it's granite or...
Partridge does?
I believe it does, yeah.
So do we.
But granite is more durable, but again, it's not, it's not perfect either, and it's a lot more costly as well than paper. There are drawbacks to either one and advantages to either one. I think John did a good job of outlining all of that.
Yeah. Okay.
Can I just point, can I point out one more issue?
Sure, go ahead.
You know, during the approval process, over the years, you know, developers will agree to, all right, we'll put in vertical granite curbing, not knowing the cost. Okay? And then they get the cost estimate for what it's going to cost them, and the tears, the tears start going down their cheeks, and the next thing you know, they're before us asking for a waiver. You know, that's the difference in price. When you start laying that granite in the price per foot, it's three times as much as Cape Cod berm.
Right. Okay.
And again, the only reason, I'm not an advocate for really either one, however, this is going to be a public roadway, and it's going to be maintained by the town. It's a lot cheaper to maintain Cape Cod berm than it is to fool around with maintaining the curbing.
Right, right. So the alternative is not much better. It's actually worse.
Yeah. And it's all a matter of controlling the drainage. That's all, all it's doing is controlling that drainage to get to the drainage structures so it's properly channeled. That's really why it's there. It's not, there's no other reason. You could have sheet flow.
But if the town plow hits a Cape Cod berm and damages it, the town has to fix it, because it's a town road, right?
Yeah.
There's a question relating to what we're talking about here. Between the two houses on the left, that area, 14-foot drop, that's the area where you want to put snow, would you consider not putting a berm there?
But-
So basically, the hot top goes over the edge and down just a little bit, and that way the plow can go through, push the snow down into the hill.
It's something, it's something I was thinking of as this conversation was evolving, that maybe we could leave some sort of break there on the berm.
Break in the berm.
In that side to aid in being able to dispose of the snow.
Maybe even in the cul-de-sac, you could do the same.
Yeah, you could design a driveway opening on that side.
The berm is going to be made of hot top, which is a lot softer. We have the granite curbs, and I'm sure that when the plow hits one of those, as John was mentioning, they really don't-
Something to look at, anyway.
Is that something we could grade?
Cape Cod berm nationally is-
If they keep on pushing that same space, that berm is going to go, and we're going to keep on replacing it. And basically, you know, plan to put the snow up on the left-hand side, then plan, plan right now to either have something alternate to a berm, make it flat, and then stop heading downhill.
Okay.
And then we don't have the issue.
That's the high side of the cul-de-sac anyway?
Yeah.
Put a drainage where it needs to grow and water's out of there.
Yeah, it's the high side of the cul-de-sac, yeah, right.
National-
Well, it sounds like we might have a solution there. Tom had a question.
I do. I don't know exactly how I want to pose the question, or just really just address it and bring up. But I see that we're near an aquifer protection district. We're bringing in 440,000 tons of fill or what?
Yards.
Yards, I'm sorry. And then we're directing water in different directions, things like that. So, you know, for all the people who aren't on town water, I know this project will be, but, you know, I guess have we looked at the potential impact to water quality that this project may have, the impact to well and whatnot, that any of this new construction and fill and new drainage might have on the existing homes within these areas, especially considering there's new water quality standards coming and things like that. So I don't know if you can speak to that and what you've done to discuss that.
So I can speak to it in terms of the stormwater and the regulations that were held to. So on sheet C9, we have our infiltration basin, and the state requirements, what we're required to do is, we're showing that sediment four bay in there, and that's in there to capture and remove any suspended solids that are in the stormwater before it goes into the basin. So that's a form of pretreatment. And then we have to store a certain amount of water in the basin itself. They call that recharge volume or a water quality volume. And we've designed this basin to meet all of those state standards. And according to the state, that's what improves the water quality volume. I don't have specific data on any percentages of anything that are removed from the water, but that's the state guidelines, and that's what we follow, and that's what was implemented here.
And then in regard to the fill that will be brought in, I assume that it'll be properly vetted and?
Yes.
Where do you usually, I mean, I just wondered, there's multiple places you can get fill, but what do you, where do you usually?
What's your latest line for fill?
So we have several different lines of fill. One of them is actually the water, the guys doing the pipeline work for the water system are pretty substantial. They're looking to get rid of a substantial amount. That material is all going to be material that, as you guys know, right now it's on the roadside as they're digging through, trenching through, doing that. It's the spoils from that work. Pavel also has a substantial amount of pipeline work that they're doing for the water system. So we know, we have a connection with them. I have a connection with several other companies doing public work, specifically because everything that comes out of mass publicly gets tested before it goes. When you're dealing in this amount of material, you go to bigger sites, there's always an LSP on the site, so we know that everything gets tested before it comes on the roadside. We have documentation where it's coming. We don't do anything that will take a chance if it's taken.
Now, does the DES from New Hampshire, do they, what kind of review do they give on fill?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear anything.
The DES from New Hampshire?
Okay.
The Department of Environmental Services, I would imagine they would be the ones that would look at the fill. I'm just guessing.
Not differently. No. No, if we get the operation terrain permit, you know, we're expected to be bringing in clean materials.
But there's no-
My company documents it for our own safety purposes.
For your own safety?
To make sure that we don't have problems down the road.
There's no inspection by DES or anybody, then?
That's my knowledge. No, it hasn't been on our projects.
Did you get your answer, Tom?
Yeah, thank you.
Right? No? Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Okay, Tim.
Yeah, right.
At the bottom of the cul-de-sac, units, what is it, five and six, would it be possible to rotate those to the left a little bit so that as the plow came down the road, it'd be kind of a straight shot to store snow rather than ending up in the number five driveway?
You guys understand what he's asking?
Yeah.
Do the issue with that, like the drainage structures are right there.
Can you come to, you need to be at a mic.
Yes, the drainage structures are right there. So there may be an issue with that. If you look at where the Y connects, right where the east bend goes out between four and five, there's drainage structure there.
Right in here. Could you follow that, Tim?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and part of the issue with that is that we're keeping, is it 50 feet between each zone?
50 feet between units, yeah.
So we're, I believe we're just over that with like 54 or 55 feet between each unit. So any movement really kind of affects the whole thing, and we don't have too much room with, I believe this is unit six, at the end of the cul-de-sac to push that out, because we're getting close to that landscape buffer, and we're really trying to pull to that as much as we can.
I mean, there is some room for snow storage there, but the majority of it could go, if we offer up that break in the cul-de-sac, in between units, six and seven.
Yeah, you really can't move those.
There is a voluminous amount over here.
Really can't move those houses. They're where they are. You can't really.
Pretty much, yeah.
So, Tim, did you get your answer?
Well, I did, I guess. I'm not sure, you know, the reality of a two-foot snow when the plow comes down, that's where the snow's going to end up.
Maybe I'll just move the driveway to the other side and not pick it up.
I mean, maybe after they open up the road, we can make with a front-end loader and double things around.
Yeah.
All right. So the second question I have, you mentioned in the very beginning condominium projects, so there are no lot lines, but you mentioned limited common areas in each unit. Do they in there?
Yes. So if you look on, yeah, so each unit has its own limited common area around it. So if they want to put up a swing set or sandbox for the kids or something like that, they have their area that they can do that within. It's not a lot line. It's just a limited common area, an area by condo.
This doesn't show on the plan, but there is a line there somewhere?
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't map it out with beats and bounds. It's one of the comments from Keach's letter.
Well, I guess as long as those are in the condo docks, then that would be fine.
Yeah.
So theoretically, you can't put a sandbox on somebody else's property, basically.
Well, it gives everybody a place where they could have things that are associated with the house and with their families.
That's all I had.
Okay, thanks, Tim. Any other questions from the board?
No.
Okay, there being no questions. Is anybody in the audience, sir, you have a question? Okay, now, let's see. Where can we, can we have him go to that mic there, if you don't mind?
Yes, him right there.
You need to go to the mic.
Or have John move his mic over.
There you go.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Larry Ordway, otherwise known as Lawrence. I'm in Abutter. I live at 3 Sequoia Lane.
Could you talk into the mic there? Move your mic closer. I'm sorry. Larry, what's your address?
3 Sequoia Lane.
Okay.
When I look at the plans for this development, I noticed that the leaching fields are proposed for behind my property. People on Sequoia Lane, whether they'll admit it or not, have water problems with their cellar and their properties. And I'm concerned with all we heard tonight about snow storage, if snow melts, that water, any increase of water flowing to Sequoia Lane could be a major problem. And I'd like to know more about how this plan would limit the amount of water going to Sequoia Lane.
Okay, so you're talking about, there's a couple properties, right?
On the map, my property is-
If we look at the cover sheet, I see 6388, which is Tardif.
Mine is 6379.
6379 is your property?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, yeah, 6379. So you're next to Tardif, Tardif is just above you.
Correct.
Okay. So did you guys understand Mr. Ordway's question?
Yep.
If you want to-
So we kind of touched on it before. Bill pointed out that, well, obviously, the property, the photography of the site slopes from Sweet Hill down to the wetland complex, about 700 feet into the property, pretty continuous slope. And so what we're proposing here, we're adding fill within that first 500 feet or so with the roadway and the units, and then it's going to slope off to the back. So what happens with, at the base of either side, if you go up to the right and the left-hand side, it creates a channelized area that'll direct that water to the back, as it has always gone. You'll have some runoff, sheet flow runoff of the back of the houses that'll go towards the wetlands, as they have always gone. And everything else is going to be captured in this drainage system and directed over to the infiltration basin. So I don't see any stormwater migrating off to either the right or the left side of the property or towards Sequoia or the other roadway. I mean, is that your understanding of this?
Yeah, no, that's accurate.
Do you follow what he said, Mr. Ordway?
I think I did. What you're saying is that there'll be no additional drainage flowing towards Sequoia Lane, that it'll all flow towards the drainage, what would you call it, the drainage area at the rear of the property?
Yeah, the man-made drainage that we're going to be, that we're required to put in, as well as the existing wetlands that are in the back as well. So we're not going to alter that course. Everything will wind up where it has always naturally gone.
So if you pile the snow on that left-hand side of the cul-de-sac?
Yep.
Which is the Sequoia side, and that snow melts, where does that melt go?
It'll come down to the base of our fill.
It doesn't go towards Sequoia?
And it'll just drain straight to the back of the property.
Okay. So that's a good example.
That answers my question.
It almost creates, it almost creates a little bit of a V or a ditch line at the base of the slope. But once it gets to that point, the water's naturally just going to go shortest route possible down to the wetlands, which is straight to the back.
And as you get further down Sequoia, you really already have wetlands there, so that shouldn't get any worse, you know, to 6378 beyond Mr. Ordway's.
And like Bill noted in his overview, his task is to pick up as much of that stormwater as possible and direct it to the infiltration basin.
Okay.
I think he's done a really good job of it.
Okay, Mr. Ordway, are you all set? Or you have another question?
I have a second question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Turning the condo documents and the leaching fields, the leaching fields are going to be directly behind my house, and I'm wondering if that would have any effect on drainage, say, 20 years from now, when the leaching fields fail. There's going to be seven houses with probably five people living in each house. They're going to be pouring waste into deteriorated leaching fields. How would that be handled so that the other residents on Partridge and on Sequoia would be protected?
Okay, it's going to be a community leach field, so it'll be the responsibility of the homeowners to maintain it and repair it as necessary. And one of the things here with this development, we have a, basically, a density that would allow us seven four-bedroom units because of the, we're trying to constrict the size of this thing to limit some of the fill, limit some of the site impact. Kyle has agreed to go with a three-bedroom home, so we've eliminated seven bedrooms out of here, 150 gallons a day in each bedroom. So we've reduced that. And what we're doing is basically collecting, behind each house is going to be a septic tank for the solids, and the wastewater will go into, the solids stay in the septic tank. And then we're just gathering up wastewater and through a series of a couple of dropped manholes, bring it down to those leach fields, which is shown down towards the back of the property. So it's gravity flow all the way to the leach fields. The leach fields are designed as an viroseptic system, and they'll meet and exceed all the DES requirements. They're slightly oversized, even for the three-bedroom homes. I think they're sized almost to the point where they was four-bedroom homes. I made them a little bit bigger. And one of the things that the state requires is that you cite these things, they call it a nitrate setback, depending on how much sewage flow is going into the leach fields. It has to be a certain distance away from property line. We meet and exceed that. We also meet all of our setbacks to groundwater. We meet and exceed the setbacks to the wetlands with the septic system design. It's in the best interest of, obviously, of the residents to maintain their septic system, to pump the tanks regularly, any sort of issues with the leach field, to repair it. And part of the homeowner's documents will make allowances or lay out that they are responsible for that leach field and the septic systems, and that they need to repair and maintain and put money aside so that in the instance that there is an issue, they can have the money on hand to repair that.
So the condo documents will have something in there about the responsibility. So once we see those documents, we'll see that in there, that they're, the homeowners association or whatever it is was responsible for those two septic tanks down there. Those are the only two right there, right?
Yeah.
Those aren't tanks. Those are leaching fields only. The tanks are actually behind each of the homes.
Oh, okay.
So each home has its own tank, as Charlie had said. The wastewater is collected, dropped down. So we actually don't have any masserator pumps or anything like that. These are just strictly wastewater. Everything has been separated prior to.
So each home will be responsible for their tank?
Yeah, one of the other things, one of the minor points I want to make is, we also supplying each dwelling with a 1,500-gallon dual-compartment tank. And the reason I've designed this is so that you have additional settling for the solids. Typically with the enviroseptics, you want to make sure that it's basically just gray water going into them, and that you don't have any suspended solids. And suspended solids come from food particles and waste, obviously. So what will happen is your solid waste will go into the first section of that tank to settle, and then there's a- and then there's a second additional tank for additional settling before that wastewater goes into the main line. So trying to protect the system as much as possible, make it as efficient as possible and last as long as possible. It's a, it'll add a couple hundred bucks to every tank that Kyle puts in, but it's well worth it in the long run.
Okay, does that answer your question, Mr. Ordway?
I'm, I'm not sure.
Okay.
The, is each homeowner going to be required to have that tank pumped out at a certain periods of time?
I can make it part of the condominium documents, that is, it's a requirement.
I think there needs to be that kind of a requirement in.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
Good idea.
Are these the leach fields on C9 document and sort of in the back, these two gray areas?
Yes, those are the leach fields back there.
That's a good idea.
That's all I had for questions.
Are you okay with that, is that a good solution?
I think so.
Yeah, those two gray areas back there, yeah, that, those are the leach fields, common leach fields.
Okay.
Not my place, but if I were a member of the board, I think this is a good proposal for the use of that land.
And if I'm not mistaken, you've been on a board here, haven't you, sir?
I'm sorry?
You've been on a board here before.
Yes, I have.
Your name struck a bell, rang a bell.
Okay.
Thank you for your questions.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else, nobody else here, or do we have anybody online, Charlie? And Mr. Tardif is there. Mr. Tardif, if you're unmuted, you can ask your questions if you have any.
John, is he unmuted?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah. Yeah, can you introduce yourself, I think last time we spelled your name with a C, Cardiff, you're Tardif.
Yeah.
Same man as last time, but you're Tardif.
It's a T, Tom, like Tom.
And what, where do you live, what's your address?
Okay, it's 1 Sequoia, and I think on your maps, it's 6380?
Yeah, we see you right there.
Okay.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, well, first of all, let me just say, all the language going on tonight is quite foreign to me, so please bear with me in my naive questions, because I really don't know a lot of what's going on, but the first thing I want to say is, I want to support what Mr. Ordway just said. He said, I, he says, not sure if the people on Sequoia Lane would admit it about wet basements. I've been at my house there for 20 years, one of the reasons I bought the house was to be at the top of the hill to prevent flooding and, and the fact that I had all the woods out back, even though I knew it'd be some building they'd have someday. I can say for 20 years, every year, I've had a little bit of water in my basement, and there are some times that I, when we had that big ice storm, I had probably a foot and a half in there. So, and I'm the highest person on the road. So I, I think Mr. Ordway's concern with regards to water runoff is a very serious one. If you come into my backyard or his backyard in the spring, it is soggy, and it's, a lot of it is running off from that side, from, from that property back there. So that's, that's a very, very deep concern of mine, and I understand the engineers that are there and all that, but I'm, I'm very concerned whether they're, they're correct or if it's not going to affect me. So, so that's the first thing I want to say. The other thing is, where I'm confused, a couple of things, now, I understand tonight is going to be a condo type of build. Just for my curiosity, is there some requirement in the town request, though, for a single home, that's not a condo, the size of the lot?
Okay, I don't know if I know the answer, can you give an answer, John?
You know, as this is being proposed, it's an open space development, and it's being proposed as a condo property. And because it has water, municipal water, as opposed to having its own, each lot having its own well, or each dwelling having its own well, and you have a communal leaching system as proposed, then it, it really makes no difference whatsoever as to the size of the lot. You, you don't need well radiuses, you don't need that 4,000 extra square feet for the leaching area, the reserve area. So the whole idea, and we, we did push them in the direction of coming in with this type of development, and, sir, you were part of that discussion back in, I think it was in October. We were trying to design this thing so it's close to Sweet Hill Road, creating the least amount of impact of the 18 acres. So the whole idea is condensing the development potential of property, which the main goal is to maintain as much environmental integrity of the property, especially in regard to the Abutters. So that's what this, this particular plan does, it achieves what this board pointed the applicant in the direction of. And now we're dealing with, you know, all of the, the issues that still need to be addressed. I just want to point out to the board and to the audience that this proposal has gone through the initial peer review stage, and there are a number of outstanding issues that still need to be addressed in the design. And that's what the applicant is going to have to do before they come back with a continued public hearing. Charlie, if I could just ask Charlie, the project engineer, how long do you anticipate making the revisions? How long is that going to take before this board, you know, at the end of this particular hearing should be scheduling the next public hearing out?
I, I think at this point, we probably would ask for a continuance for a month from now. We could address the comments from your reviewing engineer in fairly short order. But then again, we're also going to be anticipating comments from DES from alteration of terrain.
Yep.
So at some point, we'll probably be going through another round of, of comment review.
And, and Charlie, before you go on, and I want this board to, you know, because obviously, we don't want anyone to feel that their property is going to be adversely impacted by the drainage results, the, the stormwater drainage capacity and the control of it resulting from this property, and whether or not it's going to spill out onto Abutting properties, we don't want any of that to happen. So a complete assessment of that and what the Abutters are worried about really has to be looked at and understood and be able to be described. So is this water, for the next meeting, is this water going to be channeled away from their properties and not spilling onto their properties?
Yeah, I think what, the reason we have the hearing is to get the input from the Abutter, and the Abutter has expressed a concern. You did answer it, I'm not saying you didn't, but it would be good next time to address it more fully, if you could. If there's other ways you can put his mind at rest, if you will, I like what John said.
Yeah, and, and it's so important, because, you know, you have to control the drainage on your property and not create a problem for an Abutter or a Butters, because that's one of the absolute main problems with developing property. You know, is the adverse impact on the Butters, and, you know, our job is to make sure that doesn't happen.
Well, I don't, we're not saying, maybe your, your solution is already good enough, but if you could strengthen it a little bit more next time. Mr. Tardif, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I, I understand that, I, I still have a couple more questions, or if you can give me back some information, or again, I'm a little confused with the MDR, LDR, I don't really need to know that, and I understand, okay, because condo, you took the wetlands, you put that there, and you said we're going to condense the properties, and I understand now, because there's no wells, you don't have that issue. But there's still the, the issue of some things I heard in the previous meeting as far as keeping with the rural appearance of the town, the characteristics of the neighborhood, traffic line such as that, quality of life, but if you look at, if you look at my lot, 6380, my, my lot is the only lot that has two houses being built behind my house. So, so my quality of life, where I come back here now, I moved there 20 years ago, moved to this nice rural town all of a sudden, I have two houses back there because all of a sudden, we're going to make it a condo, and we're going to shrink it because of the public water and all that. But, but, you know, I have two houses behind my back lot, which impacts me much more.
Well, last time you asked a question about the buffer, and they did say there would be a 50-foot vegetated buffer around the development. So I think they're following what the rule is.
I understand the rules, I'm just, I just also want to talk about just the overall quality of life and tax payers and the Butters and the fact that, well, we'll just arbitrarily go with a condo so we can shrink everything so the builder can put their houses there. And I, I have some real concerns with that.
Okay, we understand.
One other thing, then, I, I was looking at the land use table, and it says minimum lot requirement 40,000. But if you look at lots six, that's 29,800, can you explain that to me?
Because this isn't, this is not a standard subdivision, this is, this is an, an open space development. So you're allowed to shrink the lots down, they're not individual lots insofar as a standard subdivision is concerned. Just, just so you know, too, as a sidebar here, if this was a standard subdivision, there wouldn't be a required 50-foot no disturb buffer zone. So, you know, right to your property line, they could cut the trees and they could put structures, you know, pretty close to the rear property line. With a development such as this, and, and there really is no way of developing this particular property without there being a house or two in the vicinity of your back property. This is the only type of development that would provide for that 50-foot buffer of undisturbed vegetation.
Just to add to that.
50 feet isn't 100, but 50 feet is what is required.
Well, back to your point about the 40,000, it's not required under PRD, it's not, it's, so it's, doesn't really apply what you said. They are following the proper zoning.
Jim, this is Tim, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
So, yeah, you're right, in a normal subdivision, when you're in the MDR, medium density residential, it's 40,000 square foot per lot, and in the LDR, it's 110,000. Now, when you do a PRD, you can have smaller lots, or in case of the condos, no real lots. But the overriding density requirement is you cannot have any more dwelling units on that piece of PRD property than you can if it was a standard grid pattern. So even though the houses are close clustered closer together and seeming to be, have more density, that, that is not the case. If you look at the total property of 18 acres or so, whatever, that would, you know, that's more than, more than enough area to hold seven houses.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Okay, so, Mr. Tardif, you've had a few questions, do you have any more?
Uh, no, I'm not satisfied with the answers, but that's okay, I just see this PDR, PDR thing, just a method for developers to get around the MDR and the LDR, and just something that I can't agree with, but yeah, that's the way it is, that's the way it is. I, I, I know these gentlemen have to make a living, they probably make really nice homes, they have to take care of their families, and I wish them the best, but it's at, at my cost and, and my privacy in the backyard, so, yeah, that's it for now.
Okay, remember, we're going to continue this hearing, and you can come back, and you can make some further comments, so there will be more. It's not over till it's over.
No, thank you, you have been wonderful, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you for your comments, sir, we appreciate it. Do we have anybody else out there, Charlie, do you see anybody?
I didn't see anybody on that list.
Nope.
No, everybody went home from the.
Okay, everybody, we scared everybody off.
I mean, they were already home.
So we've had all the comments, I guess what we're going to do, if, if anybody has no objections, it's recommended in our staff report, and so I don't even have to think about this, but based upon what you said, Charlie, we'll continue the public hearing. Now, do we, do we have a date, can we continue it to March 17th?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay, so I will continue the hearing to March 17th, at which time I won't be here, but someone will be here, I hope. So I will, I didn't, I can't close the hearing, but we continue, so the hearing is over. John, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I won't be here either, and Dee knows that, she's going to sit in for me that night.
Okay. So we'll figure out what's going to happen, but hopefully it'll be 7th to 17th, Charlie, but we'll let you know. It won't be the 3rd, it won't be the 3rd, so, we know that.
You don't want to put it off till the first meeting in April, do you? You're not going to really be disturbing anything out there.
Well, let's, let's kind of see how things progress, and then.
Right, you might not have a choice.
We'll say the 17th, can we say that, and then subject to what he comes back with?
You know what, if we were going to continue it, it has to be date specific.
I know.
Yeah, so, but what I'm getting at, Charlie, I, I can't be here that night and.
Yeah, it might be better to, can we do it, let's see, what would be the meeting, which would be the first one in April?
Yeah.
Sorry?
Yeah, I mean, you could, you do have a substantial amount of work to revise the plans and, you know, get them to Keach, have him revise, him look through them and recommend.
So April 7th, Charlie?
What's your thought, would you be okay with continuing to April 7th?
I mean, if that's, if we can get everything revised, and the town engineer, get the condo docs in to your time, you know, and we, we have a lot to do, and we have, we can use the time, so I would say, you can bring about a pound each bag. It would be much, much more complete.
Okay, so April 7th?
Yes.
So I'll continue it to April 7th, and John will be here.
Yeah.
But I still will not be here.
Okay, good.
Okay, so, thank you very much, Charlie.
Yeah, thank you for the time and consideration, appreciate it as always.
Mr. McManus, and everybody who commented.
You.
Thank you, have a great night, everyone.
It's now 20 minutes and nine. We have a request, under new business, we have two items, the first one is a request for escrow release for Chandler Place. And we have a, a draft motion, if everybody's read that. I'll entertain the motion.
What are we doing?
Go for it, Karen, go.
What is it, what?
Got it?
Yeah, we don't know what we're doing, what do you mean?
In your package, you have an escrow release way, way at the bottom. It's a balance in the escrow is 1,06209, and there's a draft motion to, for that. So if anybody's found that.
Yeah, she's got it.
I got it.
Okay, Karen, there we go.
Okay. I move that the balance in the escrow balance being held for the project at 18 Chandler Ave be released and returned to Chandler Place LLC, and the amount be closed, count be closed.
Okay, thank you, we'll have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, second by Tim, Tim jumped right in there.
Okay, Tim did.
Okay, so we'll have a roll call vote, Charlie.
Jim Peck?
Yes.
Tim Moore?
Yes.
Lori Millet?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Francine Hart?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes 5-0-0, thank you very much. The only other item I have is I, I wanted to, I'm not, I didn't run for, for the planning board, so this is, might be my last meeting. Are we going to have one on March 2nd?
You know, we don't have anything ready.
We could, we could possibly, but.
We could if we wanted to, but there's nothing scheduled.
Okay, so what I want to do is I, I want to read this into the record, I did send you all a copy of it, if you don't mind, I'll read it. You've all heard it, just for the record, I wanted to let you all know that I decided not to run for planning board again after much deliberation. It was a tough decision, I have enjoyed my three years as a board member, including the last year I was a chair. I am proud of what we've been able to do, and very, I'll give this copy to you, Charlie, so you can put it in the record. And I very much appreciate all the great support I've received from each of you as we try to improve things in our town and to legally approve projects that we can be proud of. Thanks especially to Lori Millet for her advice and research, she gets very little credit for her contributions.
You're welcome.
But to me, she's been invaluable to, to myself, to the board and the town, if she wanted. If she wanted, she could make a great chair or vice chair. We'll see whether that happens. Thanks also to the sage advice of Mr. Tim Moore, who's still with us, I think. On all matters, he remains the go-to guy on all planning issues and was open and honest and has helped for me. Now, while John Cash and I started off a little bit rough, but we quickly aligned after a few weeks, and John, you and I, I think we work very closely together. And we're fortunate to have someone of your experience guiding us. Thank you, John. Okay, Devois also gives her all to the board, which, while she may need, needs to be perhaps more open and sharing with board members. She is a solid contributor to town planning, so I thank you, Dee, if you're watching or listening. I'm also proud to have been involved in bringing some talented newcomers to the board. I don't want to make anybody blush, but Karen Robinson is very passionate in her ideals and proposals, and I trust she will continue to be. Her proposal for a new C3 district will hopefully get passed in March and will lessen the impact on the town. And I think Karen would make a good chair or vice chair. Going to throw it out. I'm very glad that Tom Alberta has decided to run for a permanent position after serving as an alternate. He has great ideas and goals, and I fully support him. And again, I think Tom would make a great chair or vice chair. Throw it all out. Finally, I'm very proud to have been involved in hiring our superb minutaker, Charlene. She's very detailed, and she's perfect for the job. And Francine, you know, stepping down from the board of selectmen and her role on the planning board. And we haven't agreed on everything, but we agree on most things. And she's been a very thoughtful questioner and contributor to this board. And I think she's done a stellar job as selectman. So, I want to thank you all. I think we can be proud of what we've done. Plastow Medical Center, I think that was a good development. Every time I drive by there, we've got the abutters, you know, involved in that, and I think it's a great thing. It does say Plastow Medical Center. My wife burned herself the other day, and she went right there, so it's a great place to go. The Ocean Storage Building, there's some people in town that like, they don't want the storage building, but I think it's going to look good. It's going to look better than the normal storage building. And I also think the new water tower and the new pump house, things that we kind of, you know, we were asked to look at that helped. And some of the developments that we're working, we worked on, like Carly's Way, Sweet Hill, will be done the way they should be. I think we have good hearings and we get input from the abutters. And even the Milton Cat Building, if that ever gets out of the court, we did put a lot of stipulations in there. I think we're, I'm proud that we did put a lot of conditions that, you know, the environment will be safeguarded. We did revise the master plan. I won't go through all that. You know, we do that periodically, the zoning ordinances that we passed. The three lots at the end of Main Street, as we come into town, we moved those back to C2. I think that was a good move. The sound ordinance that John came up with, hopefully we can, to apply that and, you know, people can get some relief from the sound problems. The proposed barriers for the trash dumpsters, hopefully that will pass, and that'll beautify the town. Then there are definitely challenges and opportunities ahead, you know, with the, with the commercial development. Once the potable water goes in, I think that it's going to unleash the floodgates here, and you're going to get a lot more applications here. And I'm kind of sorry that I'm not going to be here for that, but good luck with that. So, that's basically it. I'm kind of paraphrasing here. I do wish all the best to the board and the planning staff going forward. I'm not going anywhere. There's rumors that my wife may go to California, but I don't know who's going with her. If she's watching, if she can find somebody to go with her, then they have it. So, I do want to read that into the record, and I do thank you all. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Thank you, Jim.
Hopefully, she's not watching. John?
I heard rumor that this may be Francine's last meeting.
Yes.
Yes, yes. And it's been a pleasure to work with all of you, and I've learned so much. And I look forward to having Tom on this board and other members. And I'm really excited to see all the new people that are signing up for positions in the town. It's exactly what we need, is some fresh new ideas and new people to bring some good ideas to the town. So, thank you all, especially you, John. You were tremendous. You really did a great job guiding us and guarding us from getting into too much trouble. So, you know, it's part of your leadership.
I'm not going anywhere yet. You are going somewhere, though.
I am.
You're releasing yourself from this.
Yes, I am. Like an escrow release, sort of. Yes, that's exactly right.
You could go to California with Jim's wife.
I speak for everybody. We're going to really miss you and your strong voice on the board and all the guidance you were able to bring to the table.
Thank you.
Did a great job.
Thank you.
You know what, Jim? The only other thing I have is that regional impact meeting that I attended today, virtually. That happened at 4:00 today.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that. Yeah, if you could give us a...
Yeah, just give you a real quick rundown. Tim Roach, the executive director of the Regional Planning Agency, headed up the meeting, and he was ably supported by Glenn Copelman, who's the chairman of the actual regional committee for the Regional Planning Agency. The applicant did not show up. The applicant did not have a representative in attendance at the meeting. There were several planning board members and ZBA members from Newton that attended the meeting, and they had a quorum of the committee. So, what took place was, there was a discussion and review of what has been proposed. It's a 36-lot subdivision, as everybody is aware. It does include a portion of land in Plastow, which is residentially zoned. And I pointed out to the participants that even though that land in Plastow was shown on the plan, in accordance with our zoning ordinance, there's no development potential of that Plastow land unless there is a roadway that ties into an existing roadway in Plastow. And I informed them that that is on the zoning, that's part of our zoning ordinance, so that has to be overcome relative to any development on that property and that the property is zoned residential in Plastow. We were recently informed by the project engineer that he is now the former project engineer and that he will no longer represent the applicant going forward. So, I'm suspecting at this point in time, it's going to be a very long time before plans are submitted, because a new engineer being brought on to 165-acre site and starting from scratch, you know, in designing a plan such as that for a parcel that large, it's just going to take an enormous amount of time. So, I really don't think we'll be entertaining that project for probably a year or so, if at all. And then, what was brought out at the regional impact meeting, and it really needs to be understood loud and clear, that even though it's a regional impact project, they're only an advisory. They play an advisory role, the regional impact, I mean, the regional planning commission. They're only advisory. The control, the review, the peer reviews, the approval or denial of a project is all done at the local level. There are state permits that are issued, but those are technical permits. So, you know, any review of traffic, the environment, you know, density of the project, that's all controlled, approved or denied, modified at the local level of government. So, there's no big brother that's looking out for Plastow or for Newton. It's really on both towns to look out for themselves and to do a thorough review when those plans come in, just as we do with every other project. Except, you know, that's a bigger project that is in an abutting community, but bigger than your average development. So, that's what it all means. And, you know, I'm staying up on it as much as possible, and I'll continue to review, stay up to the information, stay with the information as it develops and present it to the board.
And Tim was there too, right, Tim?
Oh, Tim?
Tim's gone.
Tim's gone.
Yep, I'm sorry.
There he is. I'm sorry about that, Tim.
So, Tim, you were at that meeting too. Did you have anything to add?
No, I was not able to attend that meeting. No, I wasn't.
Okay, hope your back's better, Tim.
Well, yes, it could be another day or so.
I just want everybody to know, I got notified, it was last night. The email was sent to me at 10:30 in the morning. But, and I sent it to Jim and at his discretion to get it to the planning board. And as soon as I sent it, the notice to Jim on my laptop, my laptop froze, and it hasn't unfrozen since, but I'm getting it worked on.
I think if we had both, if we had you there, we were covered.
Yeah. It was a good meeting, but nothing was accomplished other than, you know, review of a non-existent plan. Because it really doesn't exist, here or in Newton.
We'll be talking about this 20 years from now.
Yeah, probably.
Okay, is there anything else come before the board? Not, I will gavel us to close at 9:57, 8:57, 8:57. Thank you.
Thank you.